...of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're hopefully we got a, it looks like a reasonably short agenda, so. We have no speakers. I do not believe we have any presentations. We have approval of the council meeting minutes. I had one change on the public hearing once Debbie. The very last sentence that says there were no additional eight comments. There's an eight in there.
Oh, okay.
So that should be removed. With that removed, I'll, any other changes?
No.
Is this only the closed meeting or the other ones?
Well, this, um, all, um, yes, all, all.
Okay, put them together.
Closed. Number eight on the council meeting, parents, bears and brats is October fourteenth.
Oh, yes. Good catch, Larry.
Very important catch.
Is this regular minutes?
Regular minutes.
Regular minutes, number eight, you're right.
Probably about September.
October fourteenth.
It says twelve there. Yeah, good catch, Larry.
Yeah, don't forget.
Peter?
Paul.
Good catch.
If he's done. Number seven? The second sentence, Mrs. Smith advised, this needs a bit of planning from the budget amendment for the elevated tank.
Is this regular minutes form?
Uh, yes.
Okay, which page?
Second page. Uh, under ordinances, number seven.
Okay.
Okay.
Dick, Dick just pointed that out to me and it doesn't sound right.
What was it, him?
The second sentence where it says, Mrs. Smith advised.
This needs to go to planning.
I don't think that goes with that elevated tank.
I'm not sure.
Yes, no, you're right, that, you're right, that does not go with the elevated tank, that goes...
Something getting mixed up.
That went with one of the other topics.
I'll have her look.
That goes, that goes with the one above it, I think. Twenty seventeen fifteen, the ordinance for the downtown.
Carleen's still learning to do these, this is much harder than you think. Carleen's still learning, she's doing a great job, so she'll, she'll fix it.
It's either goes to the one above it or the one below it.
Well, why don't you just remove it for now?
Okay.
So, uh, with all of those changes, I will move, we accept them. Do I have a second? Looks like Bob was first up there, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
She'll fix it, it won't, it's not much, I don't think.
Alrighty, uh, chief, your first, as, as, as the actual man, our police department.
Good evening, everybody. Just kind of recap some things over the past month. We've had about ten meetings and trainings that we've attended during the month of September. Just to highlight some of our activities. Of course, everybody's aware, October first was the cutoff. We assumed responsibility for the town's law enforcement functions last night or, or Sunday, sat, early Sunday, Sunday morning, so. With that said, we've, we've started our patrol prac, our patrolling the town and so forth, full time, and handling all the calls and so forth with the town. During the month of September, basically, we were in a support function with MSP, so we backed them up on their calls. We handled minor incidents such as burglary alarms, bank alarms, suspicious persons and so forth. During that time, the officers did aid the MSP in one, one apprehension of a DUI suspect with, that had a one-year-old infant in the car. And we, and we assisted them by transporting that individual to Frederick Memorial Hospital. We ended up bringing the infant back to the station, who hung out with us for a while. And, uh, she took a real liking to Sergeant Snyder, by the way, so. Also, we've been getting a lot of complaints down on Rising Ridge and Prospect regarding speeding vehicles. So we had a targeted area enforcement there during the month, and, and during the month, we had seventy traffic stops in those areas. We wrote eighty warnings, five repair orders, and only issued two citations. So the whole emphasis is on educating the public, hey, you guys, slow down. We got kids out here going school bus hours, they're walking along the streets, people were crossing the roads and so forth, so we got a beta speed limit, so.
Doug, I'm sorry to cut you off, but go back. So I was just thinking, there was an incident on Facebook today where someone was on there warning people about...
Right.
Our traffic, and that was, it kind of shocked me, but anyway, uh, did you say you were issuing a lot of warnings?
We wrote, right, the bulk of our enforcement, we wrote eighty warnings and only two traffic citations. So your citation to warning ratio was really in favor of warnings.
No, I think that's fantastic.
It's all about public education, hey, let's slow down. You know, if that doesn't work, in a couple weeks, you go back and then you start issuing citations.
Yeah, if you have habitual people, they live in towns, that is excellent.
Right, and that's how, and that's how we're, that's how we're running things, that's how we operate. So, um, also, we've had training on the mobile desktop for Keystone, the Keystone mobile, so the officers are ready to start using that to write the reports and everything. It's been installed on the machines at the, at the station in, in preparation of the budget amendment. So as long as that's passed, we'll be up and ready to go and start writing police reports and everything. And the future activities, again, you know, October, we took over for the town for as far, as far as law enforcement responsibilities. Uh, the Keystone program is set to go countywide on October thirty-first with all the, the departments that have bought into it. And then we have one recruit that started the academy today, Sarah Kabasa. She was at Frederick City, she had kind of a rough day, but she's glad to be there. She kind of, they kind of took her to church today. So we had, she stopped by on the way home and we had a, had a pep talk with her, so she's good to go. She'll be there for eight months and...
Is that a female officer?
Female officer, yes, yes, sir. Uh, Corporal Halterman will be attending first line supervisor school on October sixteenth through the twentieth. And this is training that's required by the Maryland Police Training Commission for all first line patrol supervisors. And, you know, preparation for the future, we'll be hiring two more lateral officers for, for hire. We kind of had a rough go with the two recruits because our selection as a recruit ended up in a, in an accident and almost lost his foot, so.
Oh, wow.
So, uh, I've actually had a conversation with, with the town administrator, and we figured out for the same price, we can get, you know, a lateral officer with, that's only got like one to three years' experience, that will be for just about the same price as it would for a recruit when you add the cost of training them and their salary, it's the same price. So it has a benefit because we'll get one, instead of an eight months, we'll get one a lot sooner, so. And that's the chief's report, anybody have any questions?
Nope.
I got a...
Rest in uniform. Thank you.
Question about Prospect Road where, where so many people are violating the speed limit and everything. I've noticed, and, and this been happening for years, that somebody puts up a cardboard sign, twenty-five miles per hour.
Right, yes, I've seen that.
Do you think we need a traffic speed limit sign there?
Well, we actually, we actually put one at the entrance of Rising Ridge at, at Prospect. So, and the other side is also covered fairly well. I mean, you can't put a speed limit sign every fifteen, twenty feet, you know, it's, you know, the speed limit is very well posted on that road, so.
Okay.
And to, to kind of jump on what Larry had said, I forget their name now, and I believe you know, I believe they're scouts.
Regal?
The Regals actually came up with a sign that we mimicked in town, and I bought about twenty of them, they disappeared at the time.
The Girl Scouts?
It was a Girl Scout, somebody's talking up. Yeah, it was a great sign, a bad Girl Scout sign, but maybe, because I hear so much about Prospect Street, maybe a solar flashing sign would be a good candidate for them.
Yeah, that might be a good spot.
Yes.
Because that's, for some reason, this is...
All right.
But thank you for what you're doing down there.
Thank you. Thanks.
All right, fire company, Bruce?
Well, it was a busy month and it seems to be keeping busy. Rescue calls, we had a hundred and four in Carroll, forty-six in Frederick, two in Howard, and three in Montgomery, for a total of a hundred and fifty-five. We're getting to really like express care. And fire calls, we had thirteen at Carroll, ten in Frederick, and three in Howard, for a total of twenty-six calls, which gave us a hundred and seventeen calls in Carroll, fifty-six in Frederick, five in Howard, and three in Montgomery, for a total of a hundred and eighty-one calls for service for the month. Some upcoming events, we'll begin our big country breakfast on the third Sunday of each month, starting on the fifteenth of October, so I hope to see you there for breakfast. The auxiliary will be continuing with their great Friday evening dinners on the twentieth, they're having a community dinner. And because I won't see you until after this is over, don't forget, our fall dinner, turkey, oyster and ham, is on November fifth.
Thanks, Bruce.
Thanks, Bruce.
All right, the community comments, citizens' concerns, this is a time when if there's anything anybody wants to address us on, they can come forward and, go ahead.
Okay, I'm not behind anybody tall, so this works for me, so. So my name is Alice Settle Raskin, fourteen eighty-five Old Annapolis Road, Woodbine, Maryland, just adjacent, about two tenths of a mile from the Mount Aries zip code. And I run the, or have run the Mount Aries Main Street Farmers Market. We just finished our twenty-week season this year, so last year, we had fifteen weeks, the best growing weeks or the best harvest weeks. This year, we extended it to twenty weeks, starting May seventeenth and ending last week on September twenty-seventh. It, we had a few stumbling blocks this year, but not something that we couldn't overcome and make work for us. The first one, we, we thought we should give way to the paving project, so, so we went ahead and moved the market that fourth week up to the municipal parking lot. And when we did so, we discovered we didn't have quite as much space, but we wanted to make it work. It looked like a, sort of a, like a Main Street there. So, um, we had ten or eleven, um, full-time vendors, and we filled in the rest with part-time or guest vendors. In total, I think we had twenty-four, twenty-five vendors total throughout the season. We had events several times throughout the season that were themed like a Hawaiian luau event. We had a butter aerobics that benefited the Making Strides Against Breast Cancer. There were themes, we had a mini butter aerobics for the kids, for Kids Day. This past month, or in August, we had a celebration celebrating National Farmers Market Week, in which we had the Carroll County Times come out and cover that. And not only did they cover it, they followed the pizza llama around so that he could gather the local ingredients that he used for his market pizza. That's Andrew. We had, there, there's a number of things about the, the farmers market, it's very much community, it's your farmers market. Don't, don't think it's Mam's Farmers Market or the town's farmers market, it's yours. So embrace it, come to it. We embrace community at the farmers market. We build economic development at the farmers market. One example is DNS Micro Greens, which is, I don't know if you all know what microgreens are, but they're little sprouts, and they have a lot of nutrients in those little sprouts. So they could be sunflower sprouts or, or bean sprouts, or whatever they are. So Dave Stewart is with DNS Micro Greens. He was looking at this vacant space over here on the other side of Lorienzos. He was saying that he and Sugar Thumbs could make a go of that. And so he's looking forward to being a young entrepreneur. We had Bella Valeris Spicy Spaghetti Sauce. Excuse me, I'm shaking here, I don't know why, maybe I haven't eaten today. So Bella Valeris Spicy Spaghetti Sauce, she came to me, Nicole came to me and asked me how she could start to market her spaghetti sauce. And I said, first, you need to go to the health department, and you need to get a kitchen, a industrial kitchen, how about the Old Town Kitchen? And so she did everything I told her to do. And she came up seven weeks before the market ended, and she had her spaghetti sauce there. Unfortunately, her work schedule didn't work with our schedule, so she couldn't come the last few times. Sugar Thumbs is another example of a local business. They started, they're in Mount Aries zip code in Howard County, and they started their business this year.
Are they the baked goods?
The baked goods, yeah.
Yeah, okay, right, that's, that was good.
So she picks from her local orchard there on her farm, Debbie does, the blonde, and, and they also go to Boggers and Larryland, so they use local, and local flour even. They, everything they can find is local. So not only are they here, but they're also in another Main Street Farmers Market in Eloquent City, the Eloquent City Old Town Market. So they're very much involved in community, and they will be in the Lisbon Christmas Parade as well. So, so they're, these, these are three examples, DNS Micro Greens, Bella Valeris, and Sugar Thumbs, that are economic development. They, they really worked this year to become viable. So then we have the Main Street community, and how do we tie it back, even though we moved up there a block away from Main Street? We never left Main Street, our minds were always on Main Street, and we just want to make sure that everybody knows that. And what are we going to do next year, we don't know. We would love to come back to Main Street if it's viable. So there are a few things that I think that we need to concentrate on. One, the lot that was repaved, about two-thirds of it was repaved, but there's still some stumbling blocks there. The, I walked through there the other day, and I noticed there's still a bit of rubble where the part that wasn't repaved. Over here, you have the caboose. The caboose is a really great location if you can make it work on both sides of the caboose. That would require you all, as you know, to get a contract from Rob Scranton to be able to use that lot. And, and make that lot a viable lot that no one would stumble over. And then there's the municipal lot, which worked well, it does have some drawbacks, but we made a way to, found a way to make it work. So with those, we're going to go back to the drawing board and figure out our seasons, whether we stick with a twenty-week season or a fifteen-week season, or break the seasons up into spring, summer and fall. So, that's it.
Oh, thanks, Alice.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Alice, before you get away, didn't we receive a grant?
Oh.
Yeah, it's pretty big news.
Yes, um, Ashley and Melissa, with the town's permission, went ahead and put in the grant. And last week, we received a five thousand dollar grant from Marbitco, which is Maryland, it's, there is a reason they call it Marbitco, Maryland Agricultural Resource Base Industry Corporation, I believe. And they supply grants to farms and farmers markets, and a year ago, on December first, I found out about this grant, and thankfully, it was pursued. I was at a rural Maryland council meeting back on Friday, up in Hagerstown, which Steve McHenry, who's the executive director of Marbitco, was there, and I think him personally in front of the RMC, the Rural Maryland Council, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How, you failed to mention all the talented...
Oh, I'm sorry, you failed to mention all the talented entertainment you had there.
We did, and...
And there was a councilman, Larry and his wife, Mary?
I, I, I had that in my notes. Yes, we had twelve, twelve musicians, and Larry and Mary came up the first time we were up at the other location. And, and then, we ended with Stephen Gelman, and he's from Montgomery County. I've seen him at other folk concerts, he's a John Denver-ish person, so he sings Sunshine on My Shoulders for me. Thank you.
Thanks. Dick?
Thank you.
Dick Swanson, Mount Aries Main Street Association, I, I'm not sure what you meant by, that we had a lot of great entertainment at the farmers market, and there was also Larry and his wife.
That means there were eleven musicians and Larry.
Anybody that heard Mary sing, know that that's, it was a compliment.
I actually have it all here myself.
Yeah, that's right.
There's documentation?
I, I just want to remind everybody, this Saturday is a cornhole tournament for cash prizes. It, registration starts about ten, the event starts, when we get everybody registered, probably eleven, eleven-thirty. So come on down really late morning, early afternoon, if you just want to come by and watch, there's some good cornhole players, and it's, it's kind of exciting towards the end, if you've ever been there before. There'd be music, there is a beer tent, and concettis will be serving food. So come on down and enjoy afternoon, it's in the rail yard, right back at the train station, and we look forward to seeing you, thank you.
Thank you, Dick.
Hey, Dick, is that, is the movie on Friday, is that a Mam's movie?
Oh, yes. The previously rained-out movie, The Grease, will be shown Friday in the rail yard. We expect, because it gets darker early, to get going around seven, seven-thirty, so it's not going to be too late a night for everybody. So yes, definitely, there'll be a DJ there to warm everybody up to Grease, so yeah, come on down Friday night and Saturday.
Thanks, Dick.
Thank you, Dick.
Pete, I know you got something.
Pete Ballas, Mount Aries Historical Society, night. Mayor, council, on behalf of all the members of Mount Aries Historical Society, want to thank you, thank you, thank you very much for the train station, the historic train station, the historic railroad yard where the farmers market will be held next year. But I did have something I wanted to cover, but I was sitting there in a chair and I was thinking to myself, it's really amazing to me how many historic things are happening in our town just in the last month and today. And so early this morning, there, or yesterday morning, there was a Facebook post about the chief and the police department, awesome. There was also a post this past month, historic, about the new monument out in Ridge Villa I knew as a child, that's now Mount Aries, right in front of Light Bridge. So two historic things happened in Mount Aries in the last thirty days, it's just incredible to me, how history is being made over and over for all us old timers, short timers, and residents of Mount Aries, just totally, totally awesome. So I, I want to speak for a moment about the Railroad Museum. The Mount Aries Historical Society is, has been charged with setting up displays, et cetera, et cetera, in the museum. Tomorrow night at seven o'clock, North Main Street, lower level, Firehouse, I invite everybody out there in TV land, you folks here, to come up to the Firehouse. It's going to be a meeting about what type of displays and what to have on display. And it's everybody's museum in Mount Aries, you don't have to be a resident of the town. If you got a Mount Aries zip code, if you live in West Friendship, and you got an idea, we need your ideas and we need your input. I ask, come down about an hour and a half, and we'll have some good times and make some new history. So, what I actually came for is that in past years, the Mount Aries Historical Society has always solicited nominations for the Hall of Fame during the month of November. But this year, we've changed that, and we're going to solicit starting right now. Right now, so we're soliciting nominations the whole month of October, the whole month of November, they just need to be in our hands by the thirtieth of November. So it occurred to me that last year, the year before and the year before, for probably about ten years, I've asked for nominations. So this year, there's no reason to say, it was a busy Thanksgiving, I couldn't nominate somebody, didn't know someone, it's just there. It's just time to do that. So we made it really easy this year, we have the paper nomination forms, which are available at Town Hall, at the Blossom Boutique, at the museum, and perhaps, perhaps, with the chief's approval, we could have some of those nomination forms at the new police station, because there's going to be an event there that I know a lot of town residents are going to come to. So, having said that, the chief's shaking his head, yes, that's good, thanks, Pat, I think that's awesome. So what I actually came for again is a nomination form, let me remind everybody the criteria, the purpose of the Hall of Fame is to truly honor deserving individuals living or deceased of Mount Aries who over significant period of time, who by work, service, volunteerism, word or deed, has made the community a better place for everyone. Those not born here, but by unusual circumstances affected our town are also considered for the Hall of Fame. Also eligible are those who were born here and went on to bring greater glory to the community by their efforts, deeds, the work ethic in our area. Honoring those individuals, we, it is believed that their stories will inspire others to greater achievement and make everyone aware of the fabric that is woven into your hometown, Mount Aries, Maryland. So again, thank you so much, I look forward to a lot of nominations this year. You know in November, I'll be back again to do this one more time. Anyway, thanks again, appreciate it.
Thanks, Pete. Dick, what'd you forget?
Dick Swanson, citizen this time.
Oh, okay.
Just, Pete reminded me of making history. We're going to make some history on October nineteenth in this town, when the Garden Club of Mount Aries and Federated Garden Clubs of Maryland is going to dedicate a Blue Star marker at Pine Grove Chapel. And I believe it's in the morning, I would suggest you go to the Garden Club Facebook page for details. I'll point out, this is the first Blue Star marker in Carroll County. It will be the only one, and we're proud, my wife is proud, as the president of the Garden Club, to be a part of this historic event.
What's the Blue Star marker?
A Blue Star, it's, the program started in New Jersey after World War One, to put markers around the country, sponsored by the local garden club in Somerset, New Jersey, and expanded across the nation, and it honor, it, it represents that people serving, or had family members serving in the military during World War One, put a blue star at their window so that everybody knew that they had loved ones taking part in the war effort, and people stepped forward to assist them as their loved ones were away. So it has taken on national significance by the National Garden Club, and if you go out west a lot, you see those at rest stops. And also, there's a gold star marker for those that lost someone during wartime. And it now represents the Blue Star, everyone who has served in the military in some capacity over the years. And it's a way of reminding people of the sacrifices and what they've contributed to this great country.
Very cool. Thanks, Dick, and they've got, they've got ornaments coming up too, don't they? I came in and shelled out twenty dollars this morning for one. So ornaments this year, they're going on sale.
Yeah, another hat is, my wife is on the beatification commission, and for the second time this year, there will be a town of Mount Aries ornament. Last year featured the Seal of Mount Aries, this year will feature the Flatiron Building. And as Peter said, if you'd like to get one, limited edition, there, there will be no reorders. Then please stop by Town Hall and put in an order, advance twenty dollars, and they are nice ornaments, if you've seen them, they are very, very nice.
And if you're collecting them, you don't want to miss this one, because you're going to screw up your set.
That's right. I came in this morning and slapped out my twenty dollars.
An error on my part, I am mistake prone sometimes, sorry about that. The nomination form for the Hall of Fame is on the town website, go right on, Katie handled that for us, you go right on and you can download one and print it off and just send it to the post office box two forty-four, thanks.
Thanks, Pete.
Thanks, Pete.
All right, not seeing anybody else lining up.
Dick, your turn.
We'll move on.
Who's going to have the last word?
Move on to ordinance and resolutions. The first two we have here, Charter Amendment Resolution two thousand seventeen one and Ordinance two thousand seventeen eleven, which goes with it. There were both issues with, I believe, Councilman Strong wants to have, make some changes in it, and there's also an issue with our being a... also an issue with our being able to do the proper advertising on it, given town schedules. So, I'm going to reintroduce both of those so they can go on the November agenda. Do I have a second for both from Scott? So, they'll be on, they will be on November's agenda. Ordinance 2017-14, Police Department. Chief, this is yours. This is the fifteen thousand five hundred seventy dollars, basically for the, complete the Keystone system you talked about, right?
That's correct.
But this, I have introduction and I have it crossed out here. It was introduced last month, correct?
Yes.
I thought so. Okay. So, this is actually here for adoption. I will move, we adopt it, and a second? It's a second from Larry. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I didn't see any. I think that goes unanimous. All right. Ordinance 2017-15, this is not back from planning yet, so we will not be doing that one. Ordinance 2017-16, Budget Amendment for the Rehab of Elevated Water Tank Number One, this is here for adoption. This is Barney's.
Right.
Yeah, we, I think we kind of, I think you answered our questions for the most part last month. It's just that we, we had to wait a month before we covered it. Any, I will move, we accept this. Do I have a second? See, Jason, any discussion on this one? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. unanimous. All right. Homestead Tax Credit, this is one we do every year, Resolution 2017-5. Mr. Mayor, you want to make a recommendation?
It's kind of a budget kind of thing. Yeah, it's a recommendation I make every year. We basically, we want to protect our long-term residents. We don't need the extra funding that we would get if we lifted the Homestead Tax Credit. Our, our taxes for our businesses that do not benefit from this are already very low in comparison to other areas. So, once again, I would ask to maintain the Homestead Tax Credit for the citizens of Mount Airy.
I will move, we accept Resolution 2017-5. Got a second from Bob. I can tell you, as somebody who operates on the business side of town, as well as the home side, when the Homestead Tax Credit stays at zero, it does slowly shift the tax burden a little bit more to, from the homeowners to the business side. The reason you don't see the business owners in here screaming is because the business taxes are already so low, that it's really, you know, not, not a problem. So, any discussion on this one? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
unanimous. All right. Hazard mitigation. This is adopting the, Resolution 2017-6, adopting the Frederick County Hazard Mitigation Plan. I will move, we adopt this. I got a second from Scott. Any discussion on this one?
Just keep in mind, this is the Frederick County side only.
Right.
We'll have a Carroll County side also.
And we've done, we do these from time to time, don't we?
About every three years.
Okay. Just to bring us on board with where they are.
Did update our EOP plan as a result?
We have, okay.
Okay.
Good.
Thank you, Mark.
It's our side, Bob. It's our side of town.
Oh, yeah, I know.
Whoa, 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 whoa. It's all of us. Well, see, it's just hazard mitigation. Bob thinks they want to take, stop him from driving.
The chief's going to take care of that. Hazard mitigation for natural disasters.
Right.
Smiling you back.
We're Bob driving.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. No unfinished business. Jumping on to new business.
New business? Oh, just for you all to approve it, then I was signing. Thank you.
We've got, we've got the salt agreement here. We've, we've done these in the past. These just basically give us the right to go to the state to get salt. Brian said we've never actually done it. It's just if we actually need to. We, we have.
It's supposed to be a bad winter.
Backup salt.
Farmers' almanacs.
We've had really bad winters before, and we've always managed to get by, but we have the ability. Jason, is it, you can move?
Let Jason move it.
I'll move to approve the salt and aggregated utilization agreement.
Yeah, it looks like Bob's seconding it. Any discussion on it? We don't use it unless we need the salt. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Got a, one reduction in bonding here. This came from Heather. She's not here, but she told me that Barney knows everything if I raise a question. Reduction in bonding, developed, recommended release is two hundred fifteen thousand seven hundred and fifty-one dollars. I will move, we release as recommended. Got a second from Jason. Any discussion on this one? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. All right. Onto mayor and council reports.
Okay. I will forward my mayor's report at a later time. I just do want to highlight, and I want to thank Councilman Hushauer for sending out the email for us all to wear pink. This is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. We have our walk coming up at Watkins Park. Does anyone have the date on that?
Fifteenth.
On the fifteenth. I've actually joined together with Scotch, say your name.
Sergio.
Sergio. Fantastic name. The Planning Commission, and Tom McCarron, and Mike Borum, and a couple other gentlemen to form the Real Men Wear Pink Muscles for Melons Campaign. So, we'll be holding a fundraiser at the Upper Deck on October ninth, Monday, October ninth. We'll be auctioning off Yeti products and a bunch of great things have been donated by businesses around the town. Please come up to the Upper Deck, October ninth. Let's support a good cause.
You have a time?
Yeah, there'll be all day. They're donating their proceeds, but the silent auction will be from six to nine. And just to let everybody know, because there's a lot of requests for donations and whatnot throughout the neighborhood, but the American Cancer Society has made great strides. One of the things they provide is newly diagnosed patients. They'll match them with survivors to give, to give them hope. They provide rides. They provide education. And that's not even to touch on the great medical advances that they've been making as a result of these efforts. I know you see it. You may get tired of the pink. It really means something. It's really doing something. So, if you can, please contribute. There's fundraisers. I know there's Wendy Warriors, that Mary's been doing a fantastic job. I think she's one of the top people, and that's for former councilwoman Wendy Peters, so I certainly support that as well. But we got a men's team, so come out and support us as well. My recommendation for appointment, and you may not have received this application, but I don't think there's any.
Is that Mark?
I don't think there's anyone at this table.
I got it.
Did y'all get it? I could tell you did get it.
We got it.
Okay, everyone knows Mark Magnolia. That's the only way I can say his name. So, I am proudly recommending him for the parks and recs. I talked to Larry and the chairman, and there's no.
Larry, you want to move him in?
Yeah, motion to approve.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 I've known Mark since he was.
Jason, are you a?
Yes.
Okay.
Fine, Mount Airy citizen. He's just one good kid.
All right.
Thank you.
Beautification, Parks and Rec.
All right. Actually, between, between Dick and Pat, they covered quite a bit of it, so good job. So, we did have the walk on September twenty-ninth of East West Park and the East West Nature Trail, and that was with Mike Kay. And, and he gave some recommendations, said that we had a terrific wetland and mixed hardwood forest out there, a good habitat for wildlife that's disappearing in the town. So, he encouraged us to keep working on that nature trail and bring it up to speed. Blue Star Monument, October nineteenth, it's at eleven a.m. So, anybody who wants to go out there to Ridgeville. So, Christmas decoration is being developed, and there's one opening on the Beautification Commission, if anyone's interested. Next meeting is October seventeenth, seven p.m. at Town Hall. The Parks Board, Sean Byrne, is jumping in into the deep end of the pool and catching up to speed with the Parks and Recreation Department here in Mount Airy. At the last meeting, we did have, invite citizens to show up and talk about the basketball court that would be built over in, in the Twin Arch Park, back behind the tractor supply on the soccer fields. We had one resident show up. She was in favor of having that done. And, and I invited people to email me. It seems like everybody's in support of the basketball court as we have it located. Dick brought up Grease, October sixth, this Friday, sunset, October seventh. We are having a mini workday on the trail, nine a.m. to eleven a.m. We don't want to interfere with corn, cornhole, so we're going to meet over on the Watkins Park side and try to set some stuff up for a bigger workday. That'll be on October twenty-first, from nine a.m. to noon. That's for volunteers to come out, help us clean out the stream and haul debris off at the trail. Baird's Beers and Barat says October fourteenth, that benefits Ava's Foundation. It'll be a Main Street event, and all the proceeds from that are going toward an inclusive playground here in town. Already talked about making strides. The only addition is, it's at nine a.m. is the official start time over in Watkins Park. There'll be a ghost trail on October twenty-first. This is for kids to go and walk rails to trails between the flower shop, Ellie's Blossom and Basket Boutique, and Watkins Park. And I believe that most of that's being set up by Ashley, so there'll be more information to follow on that.
What was the date, Larry?
That's October twenty-first.
That sounds like fun.
Yeah. It'll be like, I think they're starting at five p.m. It'll certainly be before dark. Nobody's going to be out there after dark walking that.
That's for the adults.
Yeah.
Flashlights, they go crazy.
Anybody who wants to volunteer at the caboose and sit in the Mount Airy Visitor Center, our official hours are Saturday, noon to four. You can go to Sign Up Genius and enter Mount Airy Caboose, and you'll be able to sign up for a two-hour block. Let's see, we have one opening right now on the board. Now that Mark's in, we still have one more opening. We need an alternate on the Parks Board. So, anyone who's interested, please, please apply for that. And the next meeting at Parks and Rec is October nineteenth, seven thirty p.m. here at Town Hall. Thanks.
Thanks, Larry. All right. EDC Planning.
Before I get into my report, I did want to say one thing. I, I come down Rising Ridge Road every day and pull and face the, the sign for the Prospect Park sign. And I watched two ladies plant and plant and dig and love these. It is the most beautiful sign that we have in this town. It is, it's great. Tina Swanson and Beverly Blatchford were out there every day for a week, planting, and it looks really beautiful.
Hardest work in the commission.
Yeah, they, they really are. Let's see, we had our Planning Commission meeting on September the twenty-fifth. Ron Thompson from Van Mar presented his design ideas on the Center Street interchange proposal. Planning will be recommending to have this item added to the Route Twenty-Seven corridor study, and the funds necessary to do this.
Really?
Yes. We're going to, we're going to recommend that at least it be added to the corridor study.
As a potential option.
As a potential, it's, you know, it doesn't mean that it replaces anything there. It's just an option that will be available to use if we don't get it in there.
Okay, and I apologize. I'm not sure if it was that meeting, because I attended so many. But there's one meeting that I caught the tail end of it, and there are serious staff concerns.
That was mine.
Yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't.
That was Streets and Roads. I didn't catch yours. Yeah, there's.
And well, they, and he told us, he told us with some of the concerns where the entrance at Watkins Park.
Well, I'd rather, I'd rather hear it from staff. But you can recommend it, and it's a nice recommendation, but I'm going to tell you, there's serious staff concerns.
They're not recommending we do it. They're just recommending if it looked at as part of the play.
That be added to the parcel.
Well, there's, there's some serious staff concerns with adding it.
Okay, well, you know, well, as soon as we get it up formal, we will be recommending that.
Yeah, he's been going around the commissions, and I wish that Barney or Heather, I know they had planned to be at Streets and Roads, and they couldn't be in attendance. Fortunately, I was, but didn't know he came to EDC, so.
Yeah, he, he.
I'm sorry.
No, Planning.
Planning. It came to the Planning Commission.
Okay, all right. We'll, we'll talk.
Yeah, they are, they are popular over in Howard County now, up to Columbia area. You see a lot of those, the, the little roundabouts.
Oh, I, I'm a huge proponent of roundabouts. I'm concerned with.
No, they, where they, they bring you up and took you around up, up above on the.
I'm a big proponent of that. I'm concerned with our study that the state has already looked at and looked at favorably of losing that.
Yeah.
By changing it, so.
Okay.
And I, and I think, I think it was already, it's, it's already been discussed that it can be changed. This can be added without jeopardizing the value of what we already have.
I'm, I'm sure that was his position.
Okay.
It would also, you know, give you a way to get rails to trails across the road.
To get cross you, but I believe, I believe planning is going back to the council.
Just a little bit.
Okay. Sign ordinance was discussed. This, this is our sign ordinance so far, and we've gotten two sections done. We have a whole lot more work to do on it. Temporary signs were reviewed and discussed, and a recommendation will be forthcoming to the council. The next two meetings are October the thirtieth and November the twentieth, which is one week early due to the Thanksgiving holidays. EDC Chairwoman Dominique Needle and Secretary Scott were welcomed to their new positions. Most of the meeting was a very productive discussion about the roles of EDC, MAMSA, and the Greater Mount Airy Chamber of Commerce. We have asked, the, the chamber had representatives there, MAMSA had representatives there, and we've asked that they continue to join us for a while until we can get the roles squared away, and that's that. The farmers' market is over until next spring, thanks to the dedicated group of volunteers that made this happen. Now, it would be Alice and Ashley mostly, and Ellie and Dick, and there was a whole group of people. Two weeks ago, Calver United celebrated their hundredth birthday at their present location. And the Mount Airy Police Department went live yesterday. Their phone number is three zero one seven oh three one three seven five. And if nobody answers that, it kicks.
Ask for Barney if nobody answers. Ask for Barney if nobody answers. Not this Barney. I mean Barney fight.
It kicks over to the, it kicks over to the nine eleven call center. Let's see. Oh, here it is. On September the twenty-fourth, I was pleased to be present at the graduation of Councilman Eric Poyer, Jason Poyer.
Jason, Eric Poyer.
Does he really write Eric?
No, I wrote Jason, but I read Eric. From the University of Maryland School of Public Policy with a Fellowship in Local Governance. Thanks for all your hard work, and that's my report.
Thanks, Bob. Congratulations, Jason.
Thank you.
I got his middle name first, you know?
It's not even that. Sorry, it is that.
Onto Eric Poyer.
Yeah, right. So, we just wanted to continue to, keep on promoting the Recycle Coach app. All of this is up to date, lets you know when the recycles, the trash bulk pickup and yard waste dates are. We are having a National Drug Takeback Day. This is October twenty-eighth from nine to one at the Mount Airy Police Department, which is located up on Center Street. We coordinated efforts with Chief Reitz. He agreed to be a part of this nationwide, I guess, organization. So, any unused medications may be dropped off, also during normal business hours. We're looking at getting a Dropbox in collaboration with Carroll County. We're, we are taking a look at investigating options for more recycling and less trash collections, essentially possibly restricting the number of trash cans we can have and increasing more recycle opportunities. And we're in talks with J&amp;J on, on different options for that. We have yard waste coming up, October fourteenth, October twenty-eighth, and November fourth. With all the leaves dropping, we want to make sure that we keep the leaves off the street, so blow them into the yard, pick them up, use the recycle bag, bags for those. Our next meeting is a green team meeting, which is Wednesday, October eighteenth, seven p.m. at Town Hall. That concludes my report.
Streets and Roads, Scott?
Streets and Roads. We had no meeting this past month. Our upcoming meeting is on the twenty-sixth of October, from seven thirty to nine thirty here at Town Hall. Thank you.
Water and Sewer, because of the scheduling, we've not met between the meetings either, but Water and Sewer will meet twice before the next meeting. But our next meeting will be this Wednesday at seven o'clock, right here. Monica, anything to report?
Yeah, I do. I have, I have a few things. First, firstly, Shaw reminded me that the commissions need to start working on their budget items, especially capital items for this year. We're going to start working on the budget in December, even though our audits are over with now. Need to start working on budget items. I was going to mention the Mount Airy Police Force phone number, but Bob did it. The town has scheduled four firms to be interviewed for the downtown master plan. The interviews will take place from the nineteenth of October to the twenty-third of October. So, we hope to narrow down the choice to two firms, and then divest those two firms to the Planning Commission and make a final decision to bring to the town council, possibly in November or December. So, we don't really feel that the project could start probably until early next year, 2018. Stormwater management retrofit projects, the pond at Marydole Gardens, revised plans have been submitted for review, and a copy of the plans have been forwarded to the town. We're going to need right-of-way discharge onto a neighbor's property. However, the county staff has met with the property owners several months ago, and they don't see any issue with the execution of the agreement taking place. State, federal permits, forced conservation approvals needed, along with the Town Planning Commission approval on the project. Also, Carroll County is working with the town on a possible project at Windy Ridge Park for our Frederick County. for our Frederick County Stormwater Management requirements. The drainage area to this location is 870 acres, with 142 acres of impervious area, some being in Mount Airy and some being in a portion of the county, so the RFP for Design will be going out sometime this fall for that. Debbie wanted me to mention that we are gonna have a police fundraiser at Shaladon on the 21st of October.
We are not having it, Shaladon is.
Shaladon is having a fundraiser for the Mount Airy Police Force on October 21st.
That's it.
That's it.
All right. Tom, anything you wanna report here?
Excuse me, and you said it was golfing, right? And even for those.
Oh, I didn't say it was golfing.
I don't know. But it is Shaladon, she said golfing, but even if you don't golf, you can still show up, they have a wonderful restaurant, their menu is outstanding, they have smoked prime rib, if you've never had that, they have pork belly, they have some very interesting menu items, so please come out.
They've invited everybody out, there's a $25 kind of a luncheon going on out there.
All right, so it's a fantastic place to visit.
On that day for the people that don't golf.
And while we don't always promote businesses that are not in town, having Shaladon a golf course, I'd rather them come here to golf or to visit, it brings people through our town that may stop in our town, so it does have some benefits.
They're calling for a barbecue feast at 12:00 o'clock noon for non-golfers, $25 a person, available to anyone. And if you wanna play in the tournament, called the Links of Shaladon, their number is 301-829-3000, extension 10.
Good teamwork.
All right, Tom, was there anything other than?
None other than what's on the closed.
All right, any other business? All right, I will move that the bills be paid, I saw Bob's finger was up when I started, so, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I will move that we go into a closed meeting, and at the end of that closed meeting, we will be adjourned for the purposes of discussing the acquisition of real property and consult with staff as listed on this. I'm moving that, who seconds?
He does.
Jason's seconding.
Eric.
He blocked me out.
Okay, I don't have a check sheet.
Let's call it out.
Larry?
Yes.